Hey, everyone. Welcome and call to order this August 16, 2018, regular meeting of the Grant County Board of Commissioners. Please join us within the pledge.
We are glad that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we would like to stand in New Mexico to be the symbol of perfect friendship among the American culture.
Consideration of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like us to have a discussion about removing items M and N from the agenda. I feel like it sets a terrible precedent for the Commission to be considering two items that were added to the agenda on such short notice that has significant importance to community members on either side of the issue. And since the items were, since we had more than adequate time to get it on a properly noticed agenda, I feel like we should consider removing the items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So if that's true, then Q was also added.
You are correct.
Pretty correct. The point that Commissioner Edwards just made, I believe, was there was ample time to have noticed items M and N, but item Q was not ready. We didn't know if we could.
And I totally understand where they're coming from, but we never knew that we had to turn in comments to the Forest Service that I was aware of on Wednesday, which was yesterday. Then we spoke to the Forest Service and they extended us till Tuesday. Now, I'm willing to go ahead and have a special meeting on Monday to go ahead and handle this, but it is very important that we get our resolution noticed with the Forest Service. So that is why we put it on. We weren't trying to be tricky. We weren't trying to do anything out of the norm. As a matter of fact, Misha and I had talked about trying to put something together for the next meeting because we thought we had more time to put in public comments with the Forest Service. But we didn't. And therefore, we are here because of that with these two items. And time is of the essence, so that's why I asked to put them on. But I am willing to go ahead and come in for a special meeting on Monday if that's what it takes.
Was this advertised for? So you're okay with it?
So, Commissioner Rawls, in fact, when Beth Illy was here on July 30th, I asked for an extension of the August official deadline for public comment because it was discussed. And I also asked that they hold a meeting in the details. So my preference, I agree, I would be okay with a special meeting on Monday. I just think we did know that the comment deadline was the 15th, and I think it should have been on that.
Well, we thought we were going to get that extension that you requested, is what I thought. But obviously, at that time, we didn't get the extension. We were told we were going to have to turn in the comments yesterday, but we got a call after our meeting on Tuesday to Misha, and Misha was given the call, and we decided, well, let's put it on the agenda as soon as possible so that we can turn in our comments within the time period that was allotted to us.
What is the deadline?
Tuesday.
They changed it to Tuesday at 5:00. Is that the end?
5:00, yes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to remove items M and N, and that we add to the agenda consideration of a special meeting on Monday for the purposes of addressing those issues.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, start our discussion.
You don't want to add Q? I don't see any difference.
Well, did you? I do. Okay, so I don't know. But that-
The legislative legislation.
Not only that, but the application of the difference, I understand, really to be the timing of when the contract was negotiated. However, it doesn't matter if extending that issue until Monday does not affect anything, then I'm happy to add Q as well.
And the other issue I have, Commissioner, is the way the Open Meetings Act is written is specifically so you can add things to the agenda at a Tuesday or meeting for Thursday. So I don't want this in any way to impede future additions to an agenda, because there are times when you have to do this. This may not be one of them.
I agree with that. And I think that's exactly the decision we have. Is this one of those times? I don't think it is.
I don't mind coming in Monday. It does cost some money.
Yeah, I-
I don't think the money is the issue. I think the issue is that it sets a precedent that I don't think we want to set. And I agree with you. That is the purpose of the way that the Open Meetings Act is written. But in a situation where we had time to address it prior to, I think we should do as much as we can.
My understanding of this, the way I came about this, and I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Brown and others, but I agree with Chairman Kassmann.
He just took up the job. I'm sure Chairman has to make that.
Former chairman.
He has his birthday, so.
I was going to say, happy birthday.
He could be chairman for a day.
Further discussion? Call proposing and all in favor of the motion?
Which is to postpone to Monday.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Aye.
Aye, both. Yeah, both. What was your vote?
I voted to do it on Monday.
Okay. So we will take off, eliminate items M, N, and?
Q.
Or was that your motion?
I was willing to amend it, and if we, okay, we have another motion saying that I had amended it.
Okay.
That's okay with me.
And a special meeting on Monday, what time? Better check our calendar.
9:00.
Yeah, my phone's not. I'll be home. Is there anyone standing with you?
9:00, fine with me. Okay, approval of the agenda as amended?
I move that we approve the regular reading agenda as amended. Second?
I'll admit it.
Aye.
Motion carries. Heva Regional Medical Center reports is, oh, there you are today. Good morning, Kathy Aris, Richard Soares.
Good morning.
How are you guys today?
Very well, thank you, and I hope you are. Good morning, Mr. Chair, and fellow other commissioners. I just briefly want to tell you what has occurred since our last meeting. We have engaged several recruitment firms who were on hold due to their decision. Once a decision was made to retain our hospital as a county facility, I have had one interview on campus for a full-time oncologist for our cancer center. I had a one surgery surgeon candidate who has come in. I have two more set up in the next two weeks, and we have family medicine that will be rolling in. We have an offer extended to one family practice physician who I'm very, very hopeful will accept this offer. So this does coincide with our strategic plan to expand our service lines, and we're very, very excited about that. Having said that, also on the strategic plans, we're moving forward with our goal to be a five-star quality hospital. We have complete initiatives with people who are responsible for those initiatives and the timeline that it's going to take on those initiatives, so we're very excited about that, and we're moving forward with all of those. We did have, and I'm not sure that I shared this with you, we did have a second active shooter drill, and this drill occurred for the first floor of our hospital. It was very successful in that all of our employees knew what to do, and they evacuated the premises very promptly. They knew where to go. However, the other reason it was successful is that in any drill, you want to look for things that you can count on to improve, and we did have several of those. We are very excited about that because that meant that our staff was very engaged in the process and also engaged in safety, not just for the active drill, but for all safety initiatives that we're doing in the hospital. We have had many, many compliments of the services that our staff is providing to patients, but in that also comes opportunities with people who are feeling more comfortable to bring forth other issues. And as they come in, we jump on these right away. I am very committed to looking at the outliers that come in as far as concerns, because it's through those concerns that come in that we are able to jump on those issues and improve them very, very quickly. We've had some other staff turnover, not really what I would call significant, but enough that we're looking at to see what the issues are from the employee perspective so that we can address those. We're putting together with a company called Press Gaming, an employee satisfaction survey and also a physician satisfaction survey. And these surveys are very detailed, they're very statistically sound, and when we put that out, I'll let you know. And when we get that results, I'll be glad to share that with you, plus the improvement plans that we have attached to those. So I stand for any questions that you have.
Questions? No, thanks, though.
Okay, very good. And Richard?
Hey, good morning. Glad to be here today. It's a great day in Grant County. So this is my report for the month of June, which is the 12th month of our fiscal year. It also, so having said that, we did end the year with a loss of $1,152,000 versus a loss in 2017 of $2.6 million. Some notes of interest? Oh, I didn't want to, there's a new line on the report called EBITDA, which is earnings before interest, depreciation, and amortization. So this number, the $4.5 million closely approximates cash flow into the organization. So when we lost the $1.1 billion, what that's really telling us is we did not quite cover our depreciation expense. So it is a non-cash loss, that is one way to look at it. So we did spend our $4.5 million in excess cash during the last fiscal year. Give you an update on some revenue cycle. Last month, I reported that we had $5.2 million in unbilled. At the end of June, we had worked that down to $1.59 million or 3.1 days. Our target there is three days. So we are basically at our target as far as unbilled. Our denials, so I've given you some good news, so the bad news, as I say to the board, is our denials went up in June from May, and we expected that to occur. We are holding claims longer now, or at least at the end of June, we are holding claims longer, working through the denials, learning from the denials, modifying our processes, modifying our information systems. That number today is, that actual true denial today is hovering somewhere around $700,000. So we've continued to make progress in that area. Our cash collections for June was 32%. Our year-to-date average for cash collection was 30%. Just a little FYI for July, our cash collections was actually 110% of the June, or the June net revenue. So given the situation a hospital has found itself in, I anticipated and I expect net or cash collections to exceed the previous month's net revenue, which is another way of saying this is how much cash we expect to collect. So for July, we hit 110%. And I'm going to comment in a few minutes about what we look like in August so far, just to give you a heads up. Meditech update, we continue to have our weekly meetings. Our go-live is next Tuesday, or actually Wednesday morning. We have spent a lot of time and effort as an organization making sure we understand the changes, we making sure that our staff is aware of the changes, making sure the changes work as intended. So we feel very comfortable when we do the update next Tuesday morning about 2:00 a.m., or Wednesday morning at 2:00 a.m., that we are not going to have major system issues. Now, there will be some, there will be some issues as a result of this upgrade, but they're going to be very minor in comparison to what the hospital experienced last year during the previous upgrade. So just wanted to give you an update on that. We feel very good. Turning to page, the cash collections for June, we collected $4.2 million, which was down from May but up a little bit from June of '17. And I know you guys have read all the statistics. Days cash on hand is 66 this year versus 57 last year. Growth days in AR is 73.7 versus 51 last year. We're very aware of why that is. Our days at AP were at accounts payable was 52 versus 48 last year. The look ahead, which I want to talk about, which is on the third page of the report. So you can see for July, which is what we'll be reporting to our board next week, you know, we expect to have a month very similar to June. Especially if you look at the volumes and what they calculated out to be versus the actual in June. And I apologize for the typo, month of date. It says June, it should be July. But let's talk a little bit about August, where we are today, because we are making rapid changes in the revenue cycle. Every week, we're addressing issues that slow down cash flow through the organization. And not only cash flow, but more importantly, the efficiency of how the system works. So we have been working diligently while we prepare for the upgrade in optimizing the efficiency of how Meditech works, along with how our staff uses the system. So for August, we're projecting, if the trends hold true for the first 15 days of August, we'll come in about, a little over $15 million, which is not the best month we've ever had, but it's certainly a higher projection than what we've had over the last several months. So that's good. But more importantly, if our projections hold true for the first 15 days of collections, we should collect something north of $5 million, which will be the highest cash collection month in 13 months. So having said that, our AR is also growing in so far month-to-date in August. And that's because we are not just sending out claims with known errors. We're holding those claims until they can be fixed, and not just manually fixed once, but the time-consuming part of that is getting Meditech corrected so that the next time a similar claim goes through the system, it will go through properly and untouched by our staff. So that's really where we're working very hard on now, is getting the claim claims rate to increase. A little FYI audit, external financial audit is scheduled to begin August the 27th. And during this whole process, since I've been here a little over six months now, we have kept our external audit firm and our audit partner, Tom Dingus, involved in all major decisions that we make that affect the financial statements. Primarily, and the one that's most critical through the audit, is how we calculate our reserve percentages. So we have been very transparent with Tom and his firm on this is how we are moving about the contractual adjustment calculations moving forward. He will receive today all of our work papers related to our contractual work, our contractual reserves for fiscal year ending June. So they will have a week to actually review that documentation before they get on-site. And that's important because, as I said earlier, that is the highest risk area within an audit of a hospital. And so we want to make sure that any issues that may come up is identified early, and we have an opportunity to work together to come to any type of resolution. Now, having said that, I don't anticipate any issues on how we've been calculating contractuals. But again, this is the first year that I've been here, this is the first audit our controller has gone through, so you know, something unknown could creep into the process, but we're engaging early so it won't catch us on the backside so that we can then respond to anything. So that's my report up. Any questions?
As again, for the comprehensive report, it's nine days from a year ago.
Thank you. Next slide, and writing and great explanation, and thank you, Kathy.
Thank you so much. And again, we do appreciate all of your efforts to support us. Thank you.
Moving on to public input, just to get an indication, how many people intend on giving public input? Okay, that's not too many, so Mr. Baldwin, you want to go first?
I agree.
Oh, let me read this while you're on your way up, sorry. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestion and want to hear your concerns. It's not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda, and those request forms are available in the county manager's office. Thank you, and good morning. Did you find the button? There's a little white button. You should turn around.
Well, good morning, a blue Democrat. James Baldwin, county resident. Since the county commissioners moved from the old courthouse to this building, there have been some changes. The most recent change perhaps was the addition of two new members to the county commission. Prior to that, and not too far prior to that, the county used to publish in the January issue of the daily newspaper, an article which states the county commissioner's name and the committee that that county commissioner served on, and the county commissioner's position on that particular committee. I found that very useful so that I would know which county commissioner I should contact if I had a problem with A, B, C, or D. As it is now, it has not been published, to the best of my knowledge, and I certainly stand to be corrected, for the past about three or perhaps four years. I would like very much to see the name of the committee, the name of the commissioner, and the commissioner's position on that committee. I was opposed, and I still am, to the sale of the hospital, and I wish that we could have the flyovers because our air force has to practice someplace. If they don't practice, then we can be certainly taken advantage of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And everyone, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name's Al Gabor, and the purpose of my input is based on the air force's current plans and the resolution the county commission is getting ready to take. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the county commission, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak out on this very important resolution. Makes me happy to see that you, as one of our main local governmental entities, have decided to cohesively take a stance on how the air force's possible training plans will affect our region. As is common knowledge, our regional population's existence throughout history has been very economically tied to the natural resources of our environment. That has been the case from pre-Columbian times to the present. Today, the main local industries, mineral extraction, farming, ranching, and now increasingly tourism/recreational/hospitality industry, all very reliant on the natural resource base of our beautiful region. That once self-renewed natural resource that the creator endowed this area with is our beautiful forest and wilderness. So important resource that a type of folks like Teddy Roosevelt, amongst others, saw the importance of the federal government taking protective measures over 100 years ago. Tourism is currently presented by the New Mexico Tourism Department, accounts for a tax relief to every state resident, and amount of almost $900 per year has steadily grown. Do I hold any reservations against national defense or military preparedness? Absolutely not. On the contrary, as a veteran, as most people here usually are or are related to, most are very well-veered with their families. We locally are very patriotic, I'm sure we've all seen that event. I feel the military training and defense are very essential to the safety of our country. I just happen to feel that an inordinate amount of New Mexico landscape and surrounding states is already set aside for that purpose. The inclusion of our region would be detrimental to the fastest emerging local industry benefiting from the isolation, seclusion, and proximity to one of the West's largest natural biomes, the Hila National Forest. The economic benefits from United States Air Force training goes to the Delengordo, La Cruzas, El Paso Economic Zone, have a major cost to our own. Southeast New Mexico is going through its own opposition of intrusion into their airspace because of the economic loss to their own oil industry and the emerging aircraft storage slash training-based economy they're building on. So yes, my stance is totally against allowing our beneficial, excuse me, our beautiful forest slash wilderness being turned into an air combat training wasteland. I've seen plenty of that throughout the world. I hate to see for our one set apart piece of land over here be turned into that. We've got plenty, plenty of regions that they already have access to. Again, thank you very much. Be more happy to entertain any questions you all may have on my stance on this. Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Donna Stevens, and I am the director of the Upper Hila Watershed Alliance, a watershed protection nonprofit based in the Clifhila Valley. I'd like to remind the commissioners to please speak closely into the microphones and not just have them turned on. I often leave these meetings and I miss half the discussion, so I would really appreciate that. Thank you. I want to speak to the two resolutions that were just removed from today's agenda. I will be out of town on Monday, so I would like to make my comments now if I may. The first one is Resolution 1830, and that's the one about decommissioning roads in the Burrell Mountains. As the Forest Service tried to make clear, these are roads that are already officially closed under the travel management decision, and they are not planning, they are not proposing to close any new roads. Some of these roads that were closed under travel management are still being used by motorized vehicles. Conversely, some of these closed roads aren't being used and are revegetating on their own. Some of these closed roads, however, that are even currently not being used, continue to cause erosion and drainage problems. Streams and watersheds will benefit from decommissioning these roads and in some cases, fixing the drainage patterns that move water from one sub watershed into another. So like one small watershed gets flooded, the other one gets to dry up. So we really need to fix some of those drainage problems, and that's what the Forest Service plans to do. Also, some of these roads are duplicate roads that go from the same point A to the same point B, so they're just unnecessary. The Hila, the Upper Hila Watershed Alliance fully supports decommissioning these closed roads in the Burrell Mountains. Next, I want to talk about Resolution 1829. That's the one about the road system in the Bear Creek corridor. Allowing motorized access in Bear Creek contradicts the purpose for which this land was acquired. The Upper Hila Watershed Alliance wrote a letter a few years ago to support acquisition of the Bear Creek property through the land- of the Bear Creek property through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. That's where the money came from. Allowing motorized access is the opposite of the reason why this land was purchased, which was, of course, to conserve land and water. Motorized use was not mentioned in the application to acquire this property. The only access mentioned was the creation of a hiking trail through the riparian area. The Forest Service often relocates roads out of riparian areas and streams, and the authorization of a road in Bear Creek represents a move in the wrong direction. Motorized vehicle use in Bear Creek would negatively impact water quality and aquatic habitat. Bear Creek supports a population of loachmen, a federally listed endangered species. The New Mexico Department of Game and Fish lists 29 species of greatest conservation need that occurred in the Bear Creek riparian corridor. All of these species would be harmed by a road in the Bear Creek area. Keeping the road closed in Bear Creek would not take away any roads that are currently open to public use. I mean, this used to be private property, and the public was not allowed to drive there. Keeping the road closed to motorized access would allow for hiking and equestrian access and would not constitute removing any motorized roads from public use. There are 3,300 miles of open roads in the Gila National Forest that anyone able-bodied or mobility impaired can already use. That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Yes, sir.
Well, first and foremost, good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, my name is James Coons, and I'm a basically lifelong resident of Grant County. And I came today to speak in regards to the resolution on Bear Creek and a few other ones. We'll start with the one for Bear Creek, which is R. 1830. Sorry, excuse me. Which one was it? Sorry, R. 1829. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the history of Bear Creek, but I personally have been traveling down that roadway since early 1979. Previous rancher, Pete Segulia, grazing rights to that area. I had access and a key to that area since I was a child. Gold prospecting, panning, hiking, camping with my parents, friends, and family. That road has been there forever. And I don't know how many of you know, but gold prospecting started in the early 1890s in that area. But a huge mining company, La Paz Mining Company, completely plaster mined the entire creek. And what they did was they took a bulldozer and bulldozed the entire, almost bottom area of the creek. Not many people know, but if you go look closely, you'll see where major bulldozing was done, major mining. It was eventually stopped by the U.S. Army Corps because of worries about water contamination, which rightly so. But the road has been in existence. The land was sold to, I believe, an attorney in California. That's who the Forest Service ended up getting it from, or whoever they bought it from. I had access then. I've accessed that property my entire life. When the Forest Service came out and had a press release that they were purchasing it, so it enabled access for the public, I was excited. Why? Because my father, my parents, my friends, we go there, we picnic, we pan for gold, we ride our ATVs. The road is still in the same exact place it was 30 years ago or 40 years ago when I started driving on it. I don't see how, we're worried about what a road's going to do to the watershed, when 40 years ago, the entire bottom of the creek almost was bulldozed and plaster mined. I don't see how a road is going to change anything. And for men who's living there all the time, I've seen that creek dry up 100%. I've walked from the little lake or pond there, Bennerly Pond, all the way to the end where it's private, and I've driven it on my ATV. I've seen it completely dry, so I guess they must be able to live underground. I'm not sure. Are there fish in there? I don't know. I do know that I did fish there in Glenwood Pond, or Glenwood Pond, sorry, Bennerly Pond when I was a kid. It's a beautiful place. Sure, are there going to be people who do things and dump garbage? Absolutely. Unfortunately, we have a lot of people in society that don't have any respect or morals, and we're always going to have that. But by closing access to the public, which I believe in the model, the Forest Service is the land of many uses. Land of many uses for everybody. If you want to hike down the road, go hike it. I pass hikers hiking that trail all the time. I'm going on my ATV. I see them, I slow down. We converse, we talk. They tell us they're hiking the Continental Divide Trail, or they're out walking their dogs, and we go on. We're humans, we can interact. We can be on the same road, some walking, some riding, just like on a highway. Bicycle is driving on the road, we drive our vehicles on it. We can get along. I don't really see the benefit of closing this road, other than it's going to close off things that my family have been accessing for years and other people who have done the same. I don't see how you can close something just because you want to close it. So I'm in favor of keeping the road open. I think access to that area is important. Due to the nature of the amount of fuel that's there, forest fire-wise, the road needs to stay there for sure for access for the U.S. Forest Service, in my opinion, to be able to fight fires. As a matter of fact, that has to do with the roads in the Borough Mountains. Sure, there may be roads that are no longer being accessible and are closed, but there's no reason to put burns and dirt kinds of things. If you want to stop people from driving on them, you can do one simple thing that's called enforcement. I have yet to see one Forest Service law enforcement officer since the road closure rule went into effect enforcing any laws in the forest. I haven't seen one. And I spend 60 hours a week in the woods. I love hiking, camping, fishing, hunting, riding my ATV. So I think it should be left open. Thank you very much. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's staff. My name is Jeffrey Phil. I'm here today as a Grant County resident, specifically out of District 5. I'd like to speak quickly on two matters, air force flowers and the road concerns. I'm not going to repeat what Mr. Coon says. I think he did an excellent job of also stating my opinion. One thing I'd like to mention is that road links two access points off of Little Walnut Road and Highway 15. It makes for a wonderful loop drive for a variety of people looking to enjoy our forest. I'm here today to support your resolution, asking the Gila National Forest to designate Forest Route 506 as a motorized trail. As far as the flyovers, I'd like to start off by saying that I've never served in our military. However, my professional career of over 17 years has been in the public service as a firefighter and EMT. By no means am I going to try to compare my career to that of those who protect this country on both domestic and foreign soil, but I am going to compare one aspect that I believe is similar in nature: training. In the fire service and emergency medical field, we get used to and good at running the routine calls. For us, it's the low-frequency, high-risk incidents that are difficult to prepare for. Why, you may ask? It comes down to training. It's difficult to simulate a room and contents fire on the fourth floor of a hotel with trapped occupants. It's hard to train for that mass casualty incident involving a bus wreck with 15 injured people, four of which are critical and all need to get flown out to a trauma center, but you can only pick just one to go. As difficult as it is to train for these calls, or sometimes just difficult to imagine them, when faced with them, we're expected to perform professionally, mitigate those dangers, resolve the problem, and save lives. I was with my family a week and a half ago at the catwalk. We were enjoying our day, listening to the kids play and the water flowing, when all of a sudden, that was interrupted by low-flying jets. When periodically, this went on periodically for about 20 minutes. For me personally, I wasn't angry. I did not feel that my peace and quiet was stolen. I was actually thankful. Thankful that if needed, we're protected by the strongest military power on this planet. I believe that these men and women are taking advantage of an opportunity to do something that is difficult: to train for those low-frequency, high-risk missions. I was born and raised here in Grant County, and I appreciate all of the unique and special things that our area has to offer. In your resolution, you outline a lot of important parts of our area that are special to everybody. However, we're only able to enjoy all of these things because we're free. And we all know that freedom is not necessarily free. It comes at a price. I'd imagine that all the communities that face this similar proposition of an expansion of their training areas have the similar stances as you do. But my question is, if not here, then where? And if not now, then when? What I'm sharing today here, I posted a similar stance on my personal Facebook page earlier this week. As of today, I've had 37 comments and 146 positive reactions that support my thoughts on this issue. So I believe that I represent all of those people. When I say that if the United States military needs the space over our heads to help them hone their skills and abilities to protect the freedoms that we all enjoy, then let them fly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Oh. White button?
Right there? Yes, sir. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is E.J. Montes. I'm here just speaking a couple items on the agenda that concern me, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to go ahead and do this. Give you a little bit of background. I know I only have five minutes, so I'll make it quick. I'm a two-time war veteran. Served in the First Gulf War under George H.W. Bush. I remember being a kid, seeing it on TV, when it must, I was actually in it. And that was with the United States Navy, on board Abraham Lincoln, that's a nuclear carrier. I spent two tours in that defense, in that operation, those two operations. And I later joined the Air National Guard and the Air Force. And I spent another tour under George W. Bush in that particular war, under terrorism. Obviously, both of those missions affected our nation greatly. And the reason that I mention this experience to you, the reason that I believe it's absolutely relevant, is because I'm from here, and I've served abroad, and I've been at the tip of the spear of these operations. And I can tell you personally what it's like when you're in the theater of war. My experience in the Navy, and then later on in the Air Force, came always in aviation, always making missions that were essential. That also came with losses and sacrifices that pilots that I worked with paid the ultimate sacrifice. So I have a lot of experience dealing with fighter aircraft and dealing with flight lines, the demands of many missions in battle and in war, and at peace. What a lot of people don't realize is that a tremendous amount of our defense budget goes to aviation. All these fighter aircraft use what they call JPA. JPA is a highly, highly refined fuel that is necessary for these fighter aircraft. We're talking about F-14s, and in particular, we're talking about F-16s that are out of All the aircraft that go for these missions are always piloted by the best, the very best of what our country can produce. Now, let me explain that. When these pilots come into the training, there is a very short window, just as it would be for an NFL tailback, or running back, or an elite athlete. There is a very short window of your life when you're at your optimum, meaning that you're going to be in your early twenties, and then it's gone. So not only do we have these young men and women who are training at their very best in the top, top shape, physically, mentally, spiritually, to fly these aircraft, they kept flying them for very long. I mention it because it represents the absolute elite, the best and best of our country, the ones who get qualified to fly these fighter aircraft for a very short period. So I mention all these things as a backdrop to my support, the understanding of how essential it is for our national defense. Here as a local resident, and as residents in New Mexico, we have to be happy, thrilled that some of the most important historical markers in our history have been here in New Mexico. The assembly of atomic bombs, there's so many things that have happened in this space today. And now, we have these air force bases, which by the way, provide a great amount of economic stability for everybody in this state, in a state that we all know is GDP is the equivalent of Alabama, Mississippi. We are struggling to keep a strong economy here.
About one minute.
Okay, thanks. The point is, F-16s are essential. And the gentleman was right. Teddy Roosevelt was a big enthusiast of clear skies and he created the national parks, but he was also a huge enthusiast of national defense. He got battleships out from the Navy. These F-16s, these pilots, are essential to our national defense. We wouldn't have the freedoms and the beauty without them. So, the last item I want to mention was my, I'm okay, I'm in favor of, there are communities in Colorado that do this, ATVs. It shouldn't be that big of a deal. I'm in favor, as a local resident, I'm in favor of being proactive and allowing these ATVs to go around, and I don't think it's going to be a big issue on highways. There's much more. Last thing I want to say is that by 9/11, when Air Force One was targeted by terrorism, by terrorism, excuse me, it was the F-16s that were protected, Air Force One. Their mission in protecting the skies is essential to our national defense, a much, much bigger picture than pursuing the beauty and the noise, which I'm aware of. But we wouldn't have them without being protected.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, go ahead, yes.
Raise your hand.
Well, if you wait before you get up, I'll call you when it's time to go ahead.
It's on. Okay. My name is Sandra Griffin, and I am against the F-16 flights. I am disabled, and I often go out in the woods, in the Gila. I object to the further militarization of the skies over the Gila. Also, I wanted to address the issue of the roads, particularly Bear Creek. I often hear that the reason roads are being motorized is because of the disabled and expanding access for them. I am disabled. I find that there's plenty of access, and I don't necessarily feel that expanding access for the disabled should always supersede the needs of nature. I don't feel like trampling on habitat just so I can get someplace. I think these are things that all humans have to think about, not just the disabled. And I don't think that this is really about expanding access for the disabled. We are often wheeled out, so to speak, when people want to present, bolster their arguments for special interests and industry. And I, as a disabled person, just want to say that they're not representing me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Which is the button? Oh, I just turned it off. I'm Michelle Connolly. I live in Gila Hot Springs. I think it's a real mistake to think the issue of the F-16s is an issue about whether we need a strong military or pristine beauty. We definitely need a strong military. But there is also a law in this country called the Wilderness Act, that the Gila Wilderness was the very first one protected by this law. So I'm a little puzzled why all these people who profess their patriotic capabilities don't consider that law to be in direct violation when F-16s are flying through that airspace. As someone who rides horseback probably five days a week in the wilderness, I have experienced having jets go screaming over my head at ridge top, and luckily, I'm still alive to tell you about it. I think there's, the issue of the economy of Grant County is really growing because of tourism. Those tourists aren't coming to see jets screaming over their head. But the whole point of my talking is that we don't have to choose one or the other. It's definitely important that we have a strong military. It's definitely important that the people who want to ride ATVs have a place to do that in the forest. But it's also definitely important that we protect an area of that forest I think there's, the issue of the economy of Grant County is really growing because of tourism. Those tourists aren't coming to see jets screaming over their head. But the whole point of my talking is that we don't have to choose one or the other. It's definitely important that we have a strong military. It's definitely important that the people who want to ride ATVs have a place to do that in the forest. But it's also definitely important that we protect an area of that forest for generations to come that is not got roads going through it and is just the way it started off. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Glenn Griffin, I'm a resident of Silver City. On the F-16 resolution, thank you, it's about time. You had a woman that represented about a hundred and sixty businesses that were against the F-16 flyovers. Businesses are pretty important, their grocery seat taxes make up for what the mines haven't paid in twenty years. Without those businesses, you're going to have problems with grocery seats. I'm a business person too, I pay grocery seats. So I want to ground this conversation a little bit on the F-16s. If we're going to talk about patriotism, my mom received a Congressional Gold Medal of Honor for her work in World War II as a woman's air service pilot, a P-51D final check-out test pilot, and received that honor from President Obama in 2010. So there's my patriotism plug. I was also reported to Channel thirteen and I covered a lot of news stories on the F-16s. I want to ground this conversation back down to the ground. I covered a story in Omega, which is near Reserve on the way to the VLA's. There, I covered a story with Myrtle Cox. Out there were the thirty-odd six shooting at the F-14s. She did it because the low-level flights were cracking her ranch homestead adobe home. And I got her on tape shooting at her, it ran on Channel thirteen, okay? So when someone says, "We're all in favor of this," they're not. Then I got a call one night from a sheriff's deputy in Wilcox, Arizona. These F-16s, they not only fly, they crash. And when they crash, it's horrific. So I left at four in the morning and went between Southford and Wilcox and covered this crashed F-16, I beat the Air Force to it. The deputy there was sick of the low-level flying, riding horses and having his horses go through the fence lines. When this F-16 crashed, I suited up, had all my gear, and I was headed up the hill. There wasn't much to see, just a little piece of metal shining, there was a big burn area. Yes, well, they start fires, you better believe it. There's nothing there but a hole in the ground. As I started going up the hill, the Air Force came in behind me and said, "Don't go up there." I said, "I've got every right to go up there, this is public land." They said, "No, it's got depleted uranium in it, it's a radioactive site." So I've done some research. Four hundred rounds fired is a standard release of twenty-millimeter rounds. A twenty-millimeter round has depleted uranium in it, point six seven pounds per twenty-millimeter round. If you fire four hundred rounds, you now have two hundred and forty pounds of depleted uranium scattered throughout. So when they're shooting at a target and missing, here comes the twenty-millimeter round and scatters radioactive material throughout the area. So yes, we're all patriotic here, but there's a real dangerous potential with the F-16s. So we have a lot of old adobe homes in Silver City, out in the hillsides, they're going to start cracking. I saw the cracks from it and I sure felt the pressure wave from those low-level flights. As far as road access, all you have to do is go to Mud Springs, which is just south of the Burrow Mountain Homestead, to see what looks like an interstate interchange of a dozen different ATV roads in that area. It's so bad there that the Forest Service was forced to reroute the CD Trail just above Mud Springs headed up Burrow Mountain because of the washouts and the traffic. They had to build that road narrow intentionally to keep the ATVs off of it.
About one minute.
That's fine. Granitic soil, it's the same soil that's up at Bear Creek. When you drive across it, you cause a heavy sediment load. That sediment load fills the creek bottom. As far as I know, that road was closed at Bear Creek. So the folks that are driving through it may be trespassing illegally by driving the ATV. This was a discussion to open it up, that was your resolution, that you wanted to open it up. When you drive through the riparian area, you increase the sediment load, you widen the stream from a narrow, tight stream, cool and water temperature, to wider stream. And it kills the life in that stream. Thank you for listening to me.
Further comment? Uh, for anyone who hasn't already done? Uh, yes.
Hi, good morning. I wasn't planning on speaking today, I just was interested in the activity of the commission, but I just want to say, I was here in November when the issue of the F-16 training missions came up and many, many people, many, many people spoke out. It's been, what I wanted to say today was, I really just wanted to thank the commission. I am really pleased that the commission was able to work together to come up with a thoughtful, well-researched resolution to address the needs of this community and really put the needs of this community first in a thoughtful way. So I just wanted to thank you for working together and bringing this to the commission. However it does go today, I really wanted to thank you for working together to do it. So thank you so much.
Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning. I want to repeat what she said also, I want to thank you for taking a stand on this and working together.
What is your name?
My name is Mara Miles and I'm a resident of Silver City.
Thank you.
So as I said, I want to support your taking a stand on this F-16 issue. We moved here about seven years ago and we were attracted to this area because of the environmental beauty and the dynamic community. We have horses and we ride in the forest and enjoy the wilderness area and are concerned about the environmental impact that F-16 flyovers might have on the area. And also very concerned about the economic impact. I've talked to a lot of the business owners in this community and I think that it could be devastating if the F-16s are allowed to fly over this area. It is my understanding that the decisions about this are being made in Washington as opposed to Holloman and that the people who are making these decisions really don't have any idea of what we have here. And so I think it's, that makes it doubly important that the commission is speaking out on behalf of this county. Thank you again very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ted Miles, I'm Mara's husband, so same goes for me, well, for everyone else that's had an opposition to the F-16 issue. The only thing I want to say is just that I am a member of the Gila Backcountry Horsemen's Association here in the state of New Mexico. And we have about seventy members and as far as I know, most of the members are up on this. So I just want that to go on record from the Backcountry Horseman in New Mexico.
Were you authorized to speak for that organization?
I was not authorized, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment for, uh, for anyone who hasn't already spoken? Yes, sir.
Good morning, my name is Richard Myers. I have a little problem with my voice. I got sick in January, I got cancer, throat cancer. And I'm an advocate for the ROBs. And I saw that amendment toward the Highway Commission to designate certain roads for ROBs. And one of the major points is, under the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Mexico, the first amendment related in the, were promoted. And I put to the gas prices and ROB users, by side by side, I wish that you guys approved with the Road Commission to make, under the Constitution of worship, it states that under any mode of transportation, if you're not worship or venerable or worship with some sacred ways and of retired disabled that own an ROB, I would have the Road Commission designate, I know an eighty, under the statute of passage of the covenant, in order to be possible. And under the Constitution, it says, any mode of transportation, when you go on a worship machine, any mode of transportation. And I was gonna, I saw some signs that were, that were in the front row that says, share the road with the bicycles. I do agree with that, but we, I pay taxes for highway, I take bicycles and if you want to share the road, you should share the taxes too. If they don't let us, I think, and I wanna, you know, to this, this city of New Mexico, saying, all ROBs, equality, gender distribution, states' lives, equality and justice, equality for everybody. If I pay, share registration for my ROB, bicycles don't pay nothing. But if they're allowed and they share the road, okay, you want to share the road with us, pay the taxes. Yet register your bicycle and bring your partner equality, under the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Mexico. And I also wanna, want you to raise, with the Road Commission, approve one eighty, so we can get access in one fifty-two, one thirty-five, we can have access to the forest from Upris, all around Silver City, the loop and Highway Fifty-two, where San Lorenzo is a Catholic church that we, we practice every year, go into San Lorenzo for, and also from, I'm not going out of a fifty-five covenant, staying within the fifty-five covenant. And also, and like I say, it's under the Constitution, a prescription, and it says, any road, any road that has a horse, a sheep, or a dog, you want to take. So we, we, under the Constitution, the ROB, the commander district, ROB owner, have paid my registration and I pay taxes.
One thousand nine hundred and eleven?
Yes, sir. And I thought, I think we should all be, under the Constitution, equality for everybody. And we should invest in Grant County. We should open, and not, not give it to the Forest Service, closing roads and this and that. We're gonna help the economy here in Grant County. People go to Arizona on their ROBs and this is our embassy behind you, on that, Grant County, the seal of Grant County, you see, we're here, a Forest Service. And we, the people, are the Forest Service. It belongs to us, the people, not the government. So we should be designated to, to let our roads toll. And we should be all equal. And the twenty-fourth, in thirty-seventy-six, to protect us from the government, to make in roads. And we are the government, us the people, and like the last word, God bless America, land of the free.
You have a comment? Thank you. Further public comment? Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, County Manager, elected officials, I haven't had an opportunity to thank you guys for the decision and what you did with the hospital. I really appreciate that you voted to keep the hospital as a county hospital. I had the opportunity to spend over a couple of weeks in the hospital for a family member that is ill. And once again, I couldn't believe the responsibility that was there in the hospital and how they took care of my family member. And not only that, everybody that was part of that hospital, that there, getting service was amazing for my teos, my tias, family, friends, acquaintance, it was amazing on how busy that hospital was for the last two weeks that I've been in there. I do want to thank the CEO, people in charge of the hospital on how they have handled it. And I hope that we can continue to give the respect to our CEO and the people that are in charge of the hospital. Once again, I do thank the County Commission for the vote that you did for the hospital. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Richard Bircham, I'm a lifetime resident of Grant County. I've been here and worked in the mines for forty years and thank God for them because without them, this place would not be as it is today. I can remember the times when Bullard Street in the fifties, it had two cars on the whole street, it was something. And it was a time that the mines were gone and so I thank God for the ability to be, be able to work there for forty years. And after my retirement, I bought an ATV, I rode it, I had a fifth wheel out of the Burrow Mountain Homestead, I sold it because they closed so many of the roads down. Now I get my ATV, my trailer, and I go to someplace out of state, Arizona, Colorado, Utah, places that they open their doors to us. You can ride on the streets, they have access to the, to the rides and especially Moab, and I enjoy it. It's really shame that we can't open ourselves up to that point here in time. But that's another decision that you as a board has to make because you are representatives and I appreciate what you guys do up there. I know you have our best intent in mind. And as far as the F-16 flying over, if not now, when? And someday, they may be not our needs flying over because we didn't have given them the opportunity to exercise and practice what they need. But anyway, I would like to thank you guys, each and every one of you for what you've done and what you do and I appreciate that and thank you.
Further public comment? Okay, thank you.
Are there still some?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Freddie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Luis Terazas, I'm born and raised here in Silver City. Of course, as you can see, I'm probably the youngest person to probably come up here in a long time. I feel that I wanted to express my support in the ATV usage here in our county. I feel it's really important for our youth to go ahead on these roads because it's a big, it's been a big part of my youth and being able to go out with my family and, you know, enjoy the wilderness and to go out there and spend quality time with my family has been really, really important to me. And I'm twenty years old and to see, you know, when I'm about, you know, forty or thirty-five and have my children here, I'd really love to share what I got to share with my family here. So I just really want to express my full support, all of that, thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Okay, moving on to the approval of amendments, is there a motion to approve the amendments listed on the agenda?
The Chair, we approve the amendments listed on the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All in.
Amendments approved. Financial reports, approve or disapprove the August tenth expenditure report?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the August tenth, two thousand eighteen expenditure report.
report.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Agreements, item E, approve or disapprove amendment number one to agreement number A, 1807, an agreement with the State of New Mexico Children, Youth and Family for the J-Jack continuum and compliance monitoring.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the amendment to A, 1807.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F, approve or disapprove professional services agreement between Grant County, Juvenile Probation Office, and the following contractors, Gary Staley and James Graham.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve agreement number A, 1823 and A, 1824.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolutions, item G, approve or disapprove resolution R, 1823, authorizing the purchase of five lots in Hachita from Western New Mexico University for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution 1823, purchasing the five lots from Hachita, in Hachita from Western Mexico University.
All second. Who ever got the second, whoever won. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item I, approve or disapprove resolution R, 1825, adoption of required community development lot grant annuals.
Item H.
Oh, sorry. H, item H, approve or disapprove resolution R, 1824, adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan for Grant County.
Mr. Chairman, we approve resolution number R, 1824.
Second amendment.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I, agenda item I, approve or disapprove resolution R, 1825, adoption of required community development lot, lot, pardon, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve resolution R, 1825.
Second amendment.
Any discussion? Thank you for saving me from my, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item J, approve or disapprove resolution R, 1826, this authorizes the execution and delivery of a colonist infrastructure project fund loan grant agreement by and among the New Mexico Colonists Infrastructure Board, New Mexico Finance Authority, and Grant County, New Mexico for the purpose of financing the costs of Rosedale Road Phase Two reconstruction and safety improvements in the total amount of $1,078,810.
Chairman, I move to approve resolution 1826.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Item I, approve or disapprove resolution R, 1827, requesting New Mexico State Transportation Commission to designate certain specific portions of the state highway system as a designated ROV route.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution R-18-27.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Uh, agenda item L, approve or disapprove resolution R, 1828, Grant County response to Air Force airspace expansion over the Hila for all the Air Force Base F-16 training.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Prior to a motion to approve R, 1828, I handed out some amendments. I, I took this resolution on the road tour to the post office, to the grocery store, to Walmart, spoke with some other commissioners and I found some, some things that they caught that I didn't catch, so I handed these out earlier. I'll go over them one at a time unless somebody has real heartburn with one of them. Most of them are very mundane. I would like to vote on all these amendments at once. Obviously, we need to fix Air Force, we need to spell it right, so I wouldn't go into amend that, I figure there's a typo. So at the, the last whereas, on the first page, I would like to strike the emphasis added and all apply to Grant County and add a semicolon to after two. I think the emphasis is there. On page two, I'd like to add after, on, on therefore be it resolved.
Just a second.
I don't have any issues with any of these, I don't believe, but I did wanna follow along and it's not that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's Comcast has an address on the internet.
Do you want a hard copy?
Do you want a hard copy?
Uh, sure. It's with the calendar rules.
And I'm sure we can get hard copies.
I don't know if I have one.
Can we get a hard copy of the resolution, please?
Thank you, Jim.
So I move to recess for five minutes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we ready? Back session? Call back door to the meeting. Mr. Caston was speaking.
So we'll just start over. Amendment one was to strike emphasis added at the last whereas on the first page and all apply to Grant County. I think there's plenty of emphasis there.
Yeah.
Uh, and amendment two would be on, on the now therefore it be resolved portion, add after MOAs, which would include flights over the Hila Wilderness, remote areas of the Hila National Forest, or populated rural areas in Grant County.
Sorry, what's that?
You mean any of these MOAs that would do those things?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
That was actually Commissioner Billings. So amendment three would be down on that same area in C, adding potential harmful, adding potential right before harmful, since I am not a scientist enough to know there is, for fact, harmful effects. Uh, the fourth one, um, once again, I'm not qualified to decide if there's issues with development from noise for children, so I would propose to strike especially on the development of children, the importance of solitude and, and whereas to this, to that sentence.
So period after affected areas?
Yes.
And then striking the rest of the?
Yes.
Then, okay.
Then on page, page three, which is our page number, but there's only four of them, on four A, adding the word some, the four leaders and making L the small case, so you read some leaders, the residents. Same thing with the next two sentences down, some people, and then striking many before So you could put some, the, many, many, didn't work for me after. Now, I just had a sidebar with Commissioner Edwards. I proposed originally to strike the Realtor language because actually I talked to some other Realtors after, we had a couple of them come here and it's, it's, it's not all and that implies all. So I think we would need to, instead of strike that, if we're trying to meet a happy balance here, add some to, before the word Realtors and when it says will not, change the word will to may. And then after property values, exchange the word will with may or might or whatever.
Maybe might.
And leading to possible, a possible striking significant drop in tax revenues. And then I wanna strike and negative effects on business because I don't know that there will be negative effects on business throughout the county.
I think, I think the point of that is that if people move here, the damage will be negative.
And then, yeah. And then amendment nine is Commissioner Billings, he wants the word critical struck and the word essential added. I know that that might be one of them that we wanna debate separately.
Right. So do we wanna discuss the number nine separately or you wanna discuss that now?
However you'd like to do it. If you wanna, if, I, I think probably the best way to do this is if we can have a motion to approve what we can approve now and leave out what you don't think you can, then we can.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve amendments one through eight plus the amendment that Commissioner Caston added on the fly.
Actually, that's, that is the eight. I just changed eight to that.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, so one through eight and I'll second that. I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so discussion. Uh, any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so the last amendment would be on the last page, uh, result of, would be changing the word critical to essential, so guess we need a motion to do the, the discussion.
We change the word in the last paragraph from critical to essential.
Second.
Any discussion with the chair?
Have you had some discussion? We heard at Tuesday's meeting, a presentation by Colonel Beck, who emphasized the importance of the, uh, the word critical versus essential. Uh, it was my understanding from her presentation that even though to me, those are synonymous, uh, to the Air Force, more or less everything the Air Force does is essential, uh, but not everything it does is critical and that's the distinction. And that we already know the training is essential. So changing this word from critical to essential, I think renders that entire clause irrelevant. They have already determined that this is essential. What we're asking is that they take the additional step to determine that it's critical to national security.
And my understanding from talking to Colonel Beck after the meeting was that, uh, critical is a standard that is, that won't be met, so that would in effect be telling them, under no circumstances can you come here, which I understand is the intention of, of some people, but that's, it's certainly not mine. I, I do think.
So she says on the one hand, we have a standard they'll never agree to, on the other hand, we have a standard they've already declared to be true. Is that, was that her?
Well, back again, we're doing that.
I asked her if.
Well, she didn't say that in public, so I didn't hear her say that.
I, I did ask if there was a word in between that.
I just wanna get you guys to where you can put a word in there that everybody can vote for.
If we put highly essential, would that be?
Hi, Lisa.
Barry?
I'm afraid we need our, we need an Air Force expert, this isn't a question of editing the words, and I think, I literally don't know.
Do you wanna?
The Air Force's hierarchy.
Do you wanna further discuss this table this till Monday's special meeting since we're gonna have meetings in a while?
Is that, if that's the only way to, to resolve this, you were, you were set against using the word critical because you believe the Air Force will never be able to determine this is critical. Is that right?
Right, that's right.
So both of you are set that you can't vote for it if the other word emerges, Shane?
Uh, yeah, he was clarifying that, that, yet to me, that sentence already was weak for the Tuxedo analogy, I understand, Tuesday. Uh, and to say that they have to determine something they've already determined, I'd rather just pull the entire sentence because they've already determined training is out. So if we have to wait till Monday, certainly anticlimactic for this statement I wanted to make today, but.
But you're.
I said, no, you didn't. Well, I don't know if you know, what's gonna put in the other foot.
I, I left here on Tuesday, he didn't, but, but when we got the information from the Colonel, I really think he said it should be in there if that's what she has recommended.
I think she recommended.
She, during the meeting, she, now she did, during the one session, she defined the words for him, she did not make her. Okay, she just defined.
Right.
Okay, what was the definition?
Well, the definition of, as presented by Commissioner Brown was, uh, as he presented and, uh.
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't find it too well, but my, my understanding is that essential is a lower standard than critical, but, uh, this may be a generous view, I'm open to that possibility, but basically, everything the Air Force does, it does because it's essential to national security. It doesn't do frivolous things. It does things that are necessary for national security. And yet, to say something is critical is a higher standard, uh, I have no idea how much higher, right? This is what I'm saying. I, I don't know the Air Force's rationale. Critical, I would have thought critical probably applies to half of what they do or something like that.
And I would hesitate to put words in Colonel Beck's mouth or try to, try to rephrase now, when she's gone, what she said, uh, that's why I was wondering.
Is there a possibility of getting her on the phone?
She said she had a meeting at 10 o'clock, so.
So three's a tall order right now.
I'm sorry, is it over?
The three's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so is, um, does anybody have hard resistance for having a meeting on Monday? Waiting till then?
I would just, I would just create on our own, we're not doing it.
Okay, we're waiting for a phone call for potentially from Colonel Beck. Retired?
Hold on one second, you're on, you're on speakerphone and I'm gonna put up on the mic and if you can. No, she said no. Okay. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Is there a word in between essential and critical?
Yeah, so there's just one question, you wanna take it? Okay, hold on a second. She's excited.
She's excited.
Uh, do you, um, is there a word between critical and essential? The, the question is, um, is there a word between critical and essential that can define a mission for the, with the Air Force? The answer is not that I know of. There are essential missions and there are defense critical missions, and that's been my experience in all the 24 years of my Air Force career. So I cannot come up with another word in between. You would have to just create something and maybe define it.
Would she?
The Air Force understands defense essential and they understand defense critical.
Would she redefine those few words for us?
Can you please redefine those words? So essential is an essential mission of the Air Force, so for instance, the F-16 training is an essential mission for the Air Force. And any, actually, any mission for the Air Force is, is an essential mission, okay? Defense critical or Air Force critical would mean that it's critical to the Air Force that it does a certain thing, for instance, in this case, in a certain area, okay? It would be defense critical or Air Force critical. Essential, again, is all missions of the Air Force, they're all essential, they're considered essential right now. But when they're making decisions, then they look at whether it's just essential or whether it's critical to do a certain thing or do it in a certain way.
Any questions for Colonel Beck while we have a moment?
Thanks for that, Mr..
Thank you.
I, I'd like you, I have one more question if she has time. So the, the word critical, uh, how difficult would it be or would it be impossible to meet that, that threshold here?
So would it be impossible to meet the critical threshold or is there, are there times when a critical threshold may be met? Yeah, so critical threshold may be that it's usually in the case of wartime, for instance, in the case of wartime, that, you know, or some other crisis situation, if it's a crisis situation, then it would need to defend, you know, we need to meet a defense critical stan, uh, standard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I would like to know, first of all, if that clarification changes your position?
Actually, I, I'm good with critical. I put critical in to begin with. Uh, I think I want it to be a very important situation for them to use this airspace. That may not make. That may not make everybody happy, but that's, that's where I stand.
And I think if we add one on defense critical, then that covers the idea that if it's, you know, if it's an emergency, if there's something seriously happening-
And we're not demanding that, we're, we're asking them to please look at that.
Well, we're, we're resolving, be it further resolved. Uh, yeah, so critical being a wartime standard, uh, I'm convinced that that's something that can't be met. It's not that I want them flying over the Hila. In fact, um, I think, I, I respect the comments that were made this morning and Colonel Beck's comments, that we need to tell them that there are areas, and that's not really in here in a resolution. Um, there are areas that we want them to know are here and that they need to avoid, and that would be, um-
It's just the last word. I think it's what we're trying to say.
That would be the Hila wilderness, uh, the remote forest areas, evidently populated rural areas such as up and down the Rivers Valley, um, New York, uh, there's dwellings for sure, and of course, the dwellings isn't, is in there, but, um, so yeah, that doesn't change. The, back to the word critical, essential, yeah, that doesn't change, like, but, um-
So is it reading the whole resolution for you?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So, it, maybe there's a rewording that works for everybody, something along the lines of, uh, unless, and again, this is in the spirit of compromise, because I wouldn't put any of this in there, but unless the Air Force determines that no other alternative is possible, something like that, right? So that we get out of their vernacular that we're not comfortable with, and get back to County Commissioner's language.
I could go with that, yeah.
So, what you're saying, Commissioner Brown, it would read something like this, to paraphrase you, uh, now therefore, be it further resolved, that unless the Air Force deems there is no other-
Alternative.
-alternative-
To alternative to.
Please go. So, okay, so I would say determines, to me, this is a determination that they're making instead of deems, but that's not the good-
Deems or determines?
I would say determines. Unless the Air Force determines no other alternative is possible, fulfills this mission, or can, could fulfill this mission, I have always said that way. So I think that's what we mean when, when we're trying to get-
I think that's what we're trying to say, I mean, I agree with that, yes. So, then we would scratch the essential cruel, or crucial, or critical to national security?
I'm comfortable with that. I, I would really like us to speak with a, a, an enormous voice, it's, uh, yeah.
Okay, yes, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay, now we give that to-
Rephrase it the way we want.
Let's make sure that the language is exactly where it goes.
Commissioner Brown?
Okay.
Slow, slow, strike it with clear-
Strike it with, it's, hey, make it very well, gave us a run for our money there in all that. Uh, strike from deems through security, and replace that passage with determines that no other alternative can fulfill this training mission.
I like that. Good job.
Period. You know, the Grand County-
I'll continue where we were.
Yeah, with Grand County Commissioner's background.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
There, there's actually a motion on the floor that we need to either have removed or- I'll remove my second.
I'll remove my motion, yes.
Okay, so now you can-
So, Mr. Chair, uh, I move that we approve the, uh, the amendment number nine as stated.
Second.
All, uh, any discussion for this? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve one of these resolutions. I move to approve resolution R-1828, uh, the Grand County response to the Air Force airspace expansion over the Hila for Holloman Air Force Base, and, um, I can say it's more, a motion is second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Well, I would like to have a special mind, spend some time preparing.
Sure, yeah. Any discussion?
Yeah, ten pages, guys.
No, it's not, it's one and a half.
I tried, nobody-
You know, we don't get a chance very often on the County Commissioner to comment on national security and integrity, I deleted the chances, so. Um, it's from assets to balance competing values in our society, and I'd initially noted that we have two, actually. I think that the very key question is someone, it asks us to balance competing values, both of you, all of which are battle of battles. This one, offering the Commission's influence and the Air Force's decision about where to train fighter pilots, requires to balance our common interest in a strong national defense, and we have plenty of speakers on that issue, against both the nation's interests in preserving wildlife places free from human impact, and our local interests in outdoor recreation for ourselves and tourists. I'd like to provide some historical context that'll explain how Eisenhower viewed this balance. In the era of war, and I think this is true from home among me, uh, have you heard that? President Eisenhower, he is very well addressed to the nation. He has served for over half a century. He won with justified pride for the fact that the United States of America was the most powerful nation on earth at that time, possessed a military weight unraveled in history. Nevertheless, Eisenhower wanted to warn his fellow Americans of an emerging threat to their prosperity and their delegates, the military industrial complex. That complex would use the country's desire to remain strong, to divert increasing proportions of the national budget to its newer purposes. Balance, Eisenhower said, was crucial. He said, "We, quote, need to maintain balance in and among national programs." Balance between the private and the public economy, balance between cost and hoped-for advantage, I'm skipping some balances, balance between the actions of the moment and the national welfare of the future. The situation we're in right now is exactly what President Eisenhower was talking about. To meet the needs of an air force that is far larger than what we need for actual national defense, we are contemplating degrading one of the crown jewels of the nation's monetary system, a system that sets our country apart from all others in its scope and its intention. That we're even debating this is one more sign that our country is out of balance. Other signs of balance, including the extent to which we have borrowed from the national welfare of the future to finance rumors of the past, the present, and the future. Twenty percent of U.S. income tax is going to pay off the costs of past rumors, and another twenty-eight percent to go into current military spending. That's about fifty million dollars every hour of every day. We've borrowed more than just money. We're borrowing our grandchildren's natural resources, more than the Earth's capacity to support human life even. Even looking narrowly at our national security, we're out of balance. Our air force, for example, counts 5,700 aircraft stationed here and around the world. The next largest military air force is not another country, but our own Navy, which has around 3,500 aircraft. Our last actual rival is the Russian air force, with about 1,700 aircraft, a great many of which were produced in the 1970s and 1980s. We have focused so much on global military domination that we have forgotten how important global prosperity and the spread of democratic values are to our own security. Prosperity and effective democracy require enough that can produce enough food and provide enough clean water for all. Global warming and overconsumption are reducing both airborne and available water. Instead of burning fuel to fly 10,000 F-16 pilots a year, we should be investing in solar and wind energy production. Instead of dropping flares in chaff that can start fires in contaminated waterways, we should be investing in reforestation and wetlands restoration to absorb carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. Instead of training the new F-16 pilots, we should be training scientists, engineers, and policymakers to help us meet the challenges we've created for ourselves. So I disagree with this proposed resolution's statement, that we understand the Air Force is experiencing a significant pilot shortage. That's only true if we accept the need for our currently oversized fleet. And as I mentioned on Tuesday, I disagree with the idea of relying on the Air Force to determine whether their MIA, the lowest MIA is critical to national security. So I'm glad we've taken that out. And you get to skip the Tootsie Roll analogy. But I will vote for this resolution anyway, because it's a rat-crafted compromise that succeeds in the important task of giving the Air Force valuable information about southwestern New Mexico. I hope we can all recognize this fact and send the Air Force an enormously supported resolution for his consideration. Thank you for your forbearance.
Are there any comments?
I would just like to thank everybody who worked really hard on this. It's a good compromise.
Just real quick, real brief, I just feel that, uh, we have mentioned the oversized military, well, that's a reason why we're free, and, uh, you know, some people might not respect the oversized military, but, uh, they don't mess with us too often because of that. And, uh, sometimes, uh, we, we got to realize what's really up front, and, I'm sorry, but, solar energy is going to protect us from, from our enemy when it comes to war. So, that's my comment.
Comments? You know, I would like to make, to make a comment after the vote.
Okay.
If that's appropriate.
Uh, I think, uh, my comments are, um, you know, I, I certainly, uh, don't agree with everything in here's either, um, and rather than belabor what's already been said in Tuesday's work session in here, I'll, I'll skip the parts. I do, uh, agree with, uh, Commissioner Caston's, uh, admonition to me that, uh, the Air Force was already looking at a lot of these things, and that's been requested, so, uh, I think a lot of it feels moot. I think the important thing is the last statement that we just worked on, uh, and so, uh, as much heartburn as, as I have for things that aren't in here that I'd like to see in here, and it's, it's that last statement that can make it where I can, and vote, and join the Commission in this, and I want to thank the Commission for the hard work of the compromise. Uh, any more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
So, I just want to say something.
Yes, sir.
This is exactly what Gabe and I envisioned three years ago when we voted to have a five-person Commission, is sitting down, working with each other, wordsmithing out something that would, would represent all of the county, not just a portion of the county, and I'm very, very happy to serve with you guys. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Excuse me. Uh, in the interest of public information, could somebody please read the "now therefore" paragraph, because I didn't get all of that.
Could you read that again?
I didn't like it.
Oh, you did.
I'll set it up from here.
I scribbled it.
I can't write it, I'm tired. I can, I can give you a minute, gentlemen. You want the final number? You can just read the whole thing, so I know what you have to be spoken on.
Now therefore, be it further resolved, that unless the Air Force determines that no alternative can fulfill this training mission, the Grand County Commission respectfully requests that the Air Force use the other proposed and existing areas for Holloman's F-16 training.
That's correct. Okay, uh, we are going to, uh, items M, N, and Q have been tabled till Monday's special nine o'clock meeting, so we will go to, uh, item O, award or reject request for proposals for professional services and contract regarding archaeological, engineering, environmental. Uh, can you update us on that?
Chair, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. I, uh, would like to further recommend, uh, recommend awarding the archaeological and environmental contract to SWCA Environmental Consultants, and I'm going to request that we table the engineering award until the September meeting, uh, so we can enter into contact negotiations.
Okay.
Have a little side conversation there, sorry. Archaeological and environmental today tableed in here.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I will move that we approve RFP-1805, uh, for archaeological and environmental services, and that we table the engineering section.
I'll second that motion.
Good move and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, IMP award or reject bid nineteen dash O two and contract regarding asphalt surface on Cottage Sand Road.
More?
Mr. Chair, I move that we award bid number seventeen dash O two.
Second, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye, sorry. What's going on?
I'm sorry.
What's going forward?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Sorry about that.
Chairman, I move to recess, if the Grand County Board of Commissioners- Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll reconvene as, uh, Grand County Healthcare Claims Board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the 2018 healthcare, health plan claims in the amount of forty-three thousand and fifty dollars and five cents.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn, that's a Grand County Health Claim.
So, no.
And reconvene as Grand County Board of Commissioners, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll stand for elected official reports, Mr. Dodietha.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, more giveers, County Manager, like the usual.
I would like to start off with, um, I would, I'd like to start off with, thank you, Commissioner Lisa Edwards, you actually have contacted me a couple times about my wife, she's actually one that's ill, and I thank you for your respect. Thank you so much. Uh, for starters, I would really like to thank my employees and what they're working on at this moment. We're actually doing, um, a lot with our, uh, keeping the office door, and thanks to County Managers for, uh, working with her. Thank you so much, there, Charlie, and I appreciate that. Uh, for starters, we actually, uh, actually, uh, that my evaluation for the 2018 was conducted on March fifth, uh, fifth and seventh of 2018 by, uh, Corrertis, and, um, we actually showed, uh, assessment administration was in compliance, data management was in compliance, general valuation was also in compliance, land valuation, really not in compliance because, uh, we haven't really done a land study from the year 2008, and we're actually working on it at this moment. Uh, personal property valuation also in compliance, residential valuation in compliance, commercial valuation in compliance, however, we still need to work on the land values. Uh, the recommendation was, um, there's no attempt to collect income and, um, expense data for the commercial properties in 2017. A five-year valuation history has shown that commercial values have not been changed in several years. It's recommended that the assessor should collect the income as data expense. Commercial properties should be reviewed annually by IGL standards and value current incorrect, and we're actually working on it at this moment. The mapping, uh, also in compliance, no discrepancies. Agricultural properties in compliance, uh, no discrepancies. Self-assessment in compliance with no, uh, discrepancies. Uh, I did receive a satisfactory from the state of New Mexico, Philip Serna, Bureau Chief on Property Tax Division. Um, I would like to give a small report on the update on the parcel correction project that we have, uh, accepted, and thank you very much once again, County Manager, to allow us to, uh, get the funding for it. And, um, in the, in the last two weeks, the budgets have been finalized, and we have worked on the following. The assessor and the planning department, supervisors and employees, bid to discuss the development special project in task. Set up the system in original subdivision, scanning the planning department, employees, and tracing to qual, to the quality needed for eligible mapping. The planner and the IT department have set up a direct scanner and scanning for the oversized printer, scanning the network and assisting to this. Tracy has developed a project scope to work on the drawings and the previous, uh, administration of the GIS contract with the city of Deming, Larry Brockman from Property Tax Division, planners, contracts, uh, here in Grand County, and experience with others. Uh, Raul, Matthew, and Missy have evaluated the personnel needed with the assessor's office and allocate Tracy's current duties to other employees to allow the project to work. Tracy is in the process of training other employees, and the project is on schedule. And I do stand for any questions on that, uh, parcel correction? And I do stand for any questions on that, uh, partial correction? Thank you very much, I really appreciate that. Um, September, the first week of September, we're actually going to be receiving the tax rate, so we're actually going to, once again, run the yield control formula. We'll get you that information, because you have within five days to, to actually, uh, accept or deny the tax rate. In particular, time and use this group, we're actually going to be meeting in Sundavant County Courthouse on Wednesday, the 22nd and the 23rd, and there's quite a lot on the agenda, so we're actually going to be attending, uh, Matthew Myers, uh, excuse me, Matthew James, and myself. Uh, County Manager, I would just like to ask this, um, we're going to be having our protest board on September the 12th, and, uh, we actually have, uh, three board members, they're actually from the community, and, uh, there's going to be two crucial protests that we're going to be facing on September 12th. However, one of the board members has to, um, has to, uh, excuse himself from one of the protests. However, we do have the third alternate, and with the third alternate, she is going to be out of town on that day. So, what we need to do, and if I may, we probably will have to appoint another individual to sit on the protest board. And, uh, if you guys are having a special meeting on Monday, is there any way possible we can put that on the agenda? Thank you very much, uh, and I will give you the explanation and, uh, the breakdown of the statutes on that. Thank you once again. Um, everything was doing great, and, uh, uh, like I said, once again, I really appreciate my employees. Uh, they're doing a fantastic job. We're actually spending a lot of time on the field, and, uh, just playing catch-up at the time. Uh, on the, uh, local, you know, social, we do have the Western New Mexico University Bash, and, uh, I guess I'll be there with, uh, President Joel Shepherd, uh, accepting and, uh, thanking the students to come back to Western New Mexico University, and that's going to be on Friday, and hopefully it'd be nice to have a few elected officials there so that you guys can get powdered with purple, uh, powder for the incoming, for the, the students. Uh, we do have the talent show, and thanks a lot, uh, Representative, Commissioner Roberts, we talked about the talent show, it's going to be on the 24th and the 25th. It's going to be a great show, we've already did our technical, um, rehearsals, uh, dress rehearsal's going to be on Thursday of the 23rd. Friday's going to be the five, five dollar to show up, uh, we already have close to about four hundred and fifty seats sold for Friday. All awards will be given on Saturday for the Grant County, Silver City, Grant County has talent, and, uh, sadly to say, I'm going to be hosting that, so we'll see how that goes. I do stand for any questions?
Questions?
A quick one, you mentioned the, I believe it was the auditors' comment that you should be collecting information on income from businesses.
That is correct.
Do you have the power to do that?
We do have the power to do that due to the fact, because of the three approaches to value, and it's under, uh, sales, uh, income approach to value or cost. So, I do have the right to ask for income approach, uh, information.
What, even if they didn't protest it?
Even, no, even if they did protest it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Mr. Armitage?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, um, you have my report in front of you. We collected, um, so far, ninety-three point zero eight percent of the 2017 taxes. This last, from the last report in July, we collected twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents, um, for the county. However, from all, all receipts from all sources, from all authorities, we've collected since July the first, two million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine sixty-four seventeen. So, um, I want to thank my staff for continuing to do the work that they do. Uh, we do have the auditors in our office today, for, they've been there since Tuesday, and I believe they're leaving today and coming back later on, so, um, if there's any questions or anything that...
Questions? Thank you, thanks for the report. Ms. Chris Reo?
Still on the phone.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner reports. Who wants to start?
I'd like to start.
Okay.
Actually, I just wanted to see if, uh, on Monday, we could start our meeting at eight o'clock versus nine, because we have a swap a meeting at ten.
I can do that.
Does that be okay with everyone? Want me to go here or not?
I'll be calling.
We'll bring you a call.
Setting it up.
Okay.
So, that's okay. I can call you when I get out.
Does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. All right, eight, at eight o'clock, is that...
That's it.
Okay, um, is that all you had?
Got one more.
Commissioner Edwards?
I'm good.
I just wanted to, um, draw some attention, because I don't think you got enough, to an article in the Daily Press, um, some time ago. It said, "Good Year for Grant County," uh, and then it says, "Freeze up some funds." So, I don't know if you can tell by the headline, but the, the bottom line is, I want to com- compliment and commend Manager Webb on her cautious, we'll say, not, uh, instead of the word conservative, I would say cautious, uh, budgeting. Um, it, it turns out that, um, according to the article, and, and this being the truth, that, um, about a million dollars more, according to Linda Voskis, than we expected, uh, God added, and, and that could have been a very, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time speaking. That could have been a very different story. Um, I appreciate the caution, uh, when, uh, the County Manager, County staff are budgeting, uh, it's always easy to spend money that's left over. It could have really created a crisis if those unexpected funds, or those, uh, funds that, that might not have come through, did come through, if that makes any sense. Um, this, uh, also allowed for the 1.5 percenting, uh, for the budget in this year, for the 1.5 increase for employees, uh, cost of live, and some other, uh, necessary items. I just wanted to commend the County Manager on that. Uh, anything further, then?
Mr. Chairman?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.